For a little bit of housekeeping, if you don't mind typing your name and your center or program into the chat box, we would appreciate it. We are recording today and we'll keep everyone muted for the time being. But we'll have opportunities for questions at the end. We've got a lot to cover and I appreciate you all being cooperative and are changing from our hurricane day last week. To today, but we do have a lot to cover, so we will move relatively quickly, but we are recording this, so we'll send out a follow up to everyone later as well. Right, so with that being said, as you can see, pretty big agenda. Welcome and introductions are pretty easy. I'm Jennifer Grant. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for the Early Learning Coalition of Seminole. I sometimes forget to say that because I see lots of familiar faces. And we're happy that you're joining us. We have a number of our team members on as well, so the great minds that can answer questions that I don't know the details on are joining us as well. We'll be talking about the ARPA, American Recovery Act Plan. We've got discretionary grant program to talk about today. The Early Childhood Survey that many of or most of you have participated in already. We'll talk about Marco Polo, Learning for Educators and for Families briefly. The New World's Reading Initiative. Which is a really great opportunity for our VPK kids this year. School readiness program reminders, some VPK program reminders, and then a little bit about community resources that I wanted to share with you as well as some time for Q and A. So we'll get started. The American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA affectionately known. Everyone last week should have received their round two final payment part B. For those of you that don't recall, you applied almost a year ago, it seems now, for the American Recovery Plan Act, and in that you had to determine. Answer some questions about your enrollment and if you were going to use some of these grant funds towards your your staff. And then it allocated and calculated a certain amount of money. After that, the state. Realized that there were some unspent funds and they decided to basically claw all of those funds back and reallocate it. They have done that a second time. So what we thought was our final payment was final payment A, and they have now given us more funding that should have shown up in your. Bank accounts starting usually within 24 or 48 hours. So we released the funds the evening of the 29th. So you should have a payment in your bank accounts, the same way that we pay you for your. The other grants and your your regular school readiness or VPK payments in your bank account is your final payment part B. Can we jump forward, Lori? So here's the hard part. We gave you money at the end of July. Whoops, back one. Can we go back one more, Lori?
It's not showing me the slides on the other.
We're moving forward.
Yeah, I know. Okay, I got it. Okay. Sorry.
We want to go backwards, Lori, to one more back. All of these funds must be spent, so your ARPA round two. First payment, round two final A and round two final B in total must all be spent by September 20th, 2023. I know many of you, that's a little bit of a panic to spend money that you weren't anticipating by the end of the year. We have sent out some guidance. I know everybody doesn't always. Read through line by line in that guidance, but I want you to all know the big part about this is that you can reimburse your business for money spent. All the way back to September, I'm sorry, to January 31st of 2021. So if you spent money on your staff way back then, you reimburse the business. You save those receipts, whatever from your accounting software, your paycheck stubs, whatever you want to use to reimburse yourself. Once you reimburse yourself from the allowable expenses, those dollars are yours, they're revenue now. So you're reimbursing yourself for expenditures that are already on that allowable list. You can see on the left side of the slide here, we sent out and it's it's available all over the place, but we'll send it out again. The sub grant spending and document guide, because these are the documents that you will need to have available when we come out to monitor you. Or the state or the federal government could come in the future and ask to see how you spent these dollars. You are allowed to reimburse yourself all the way back. So I just want to make sure that you understand that. The other piece on here, let's go to the next page. You can use it certainly for current business needs. There's no doubt about that, but I think some folks panicked a little bit with the amount of funding. So you can use this to reimburse yourself. And look at these categories, so payroll benefits, other personnel costs, rent, mortgage, operations, PPE. Hopefully, we're not having to buy that as much anymore, but certainly. Cleaning supplies. Professional development, goods and services to maintain or resume childcare services. You can use it for workforce investment, so that's stuff for your teachers, mental health supports for your children or your employees. And you can use it for copayment or tuition waivers. Again, any of your regular business operations, that's that second square in the top. Can these can be used for. You just need to keep all of your documentation and that's what that guide tells you about. We did send that out on August 29th via Constant Contact, but I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of the spending guides we are monitoring and you could randomly be randomly selected. To look at that, to to have to present your backup documentation. So I wanted to make sure everyone was aware. One last piece is that when you said, if you checked on the box that you were going to spend 25% of the grant award on your employees. That's the total amount, so you can add in ARPA round. Two. A. Round two B and the original ARPA round two altogether, and if you spent 25% of that total amount, that's that's what counts. Towards the monitoring requirement. So just trying to make sure, I know it's a lot of money and a short timeframe, asking you delivering you funds and saying you have to spend it. By the end of the month is a little bit overwhelming, but you can go all the way back to. January 31st of 2021 to reimburse your business for any of those expenses. So that being said, we have more funds coming from the American Rescue Plan Act. This is a discretionary grant program, so the state has allocated to Seminole County alone. Approximately $6 million in funding. We have to establish programs. And grant opportunities. For you all, this again is just for Seminole County providers. This is Seminole County funding. All the counties are getting their their share of this. And we will have different types of programming available, so increasing and building the supply. Of childcare in our community is part of it. Training and professional development activities. Workforce initiatives. Local initiatives to improve kindergarten readiness. Community outreach and family engagement, mental health supports. And equipment supplies, classroom materials and business and learning software. These are the categories we're allowed to spend these funds in. We can't just write checks. We have to actually create a plan, submit it to the state. And have their approval to move forward. So in order, just to give you an idea, we got this allocation. A year, let's see, we got the allocation about two weeks ago. A week and a half ago, we found out that our application is due to the state this Friday. So when we push deadlines to you all and it feels like a short timeline, we're in the boat with you. So in preparation for that, we put out the Early Childhood Program Needs Survey. This was just an idea to get feedback from you all. On areas that we could possibly offer support. Just to give you an idea of what our our results were so far, this survey and Cheyenne, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the survey is still open, so if you haven't completed this survey, please do so. We have to close it within the next 24 hours. Because. We have to use these results towards making our plan. Again, our plan is due Friday. And there is no extensions, the state has told us. So we asked if you charged employees for the cost of background screenings at the time of hire, just to get an idea, that's something that some of our colleagues in the state had reimbursed providers for in the past. We know it's a business expense for you all, especially if there's high turnover. So we wanted you to be aware of that, and you can see the results so far. We looked at whether or not you currently have gold seal status and if your program is accredited, or if you're interested in obtaining gold seal status. Let me explain why we're looking at that. When all of this ARPA money goes away, if you are school readiness and gold seal, we can pay you 20% more for every school readiness. Child that you're serving. So it's a way to extend and increase income over time. Because when this ARPA money goes away, it's it's gone. So we're trying to figure out ways to help you increase revenue longer term. Obviously, gold seal status is and being in accredited program that's authorized by the state. Also has other types of benefits to your business that I won't go into right now, but I wanted to share that with you and why we were asking the question. Next slide, please. We asked if you had purchased new curriculum in the past three months or planned on purchasing a new curriculum. If you were, whoops. Computer's going very fast. If. You had purchased childcare management software and if. That was something that you were interested in, because on that list of allowable supports is business administration software for providers. We'll move forward one more. If so, what software were you interested in learning more about or interested in purchasing? We looked at class group coaching and if your staff had had participated in that or were interested in participating in that, we can see a pretty, pretty good group there. Again, that class group coaching is helping you increase the readiness rate for children and increase your score. Again, in school readiness, we can pay more if you have a higher class observation score, so that's another way to get more revenue. Right now, that's not part of the VPK program, but perhaps in the future it will be, I don't know. Are you currently using Marco Polo for educators? And would you like more information on how to use that? We'll talk a little bit more about Marco Polo today. So for the survey. I just wanted to make sure that everyone has taken a look at that survey. Cheyenne, I don't know if you can hear me, is is it still open right now?
Yes, it is.
It is. So we're probably going to have to close it by the end of the day tomorrow, correct?
Right.
Right. So by 5:00 PM tomorrow night, if you haven't completed that survey, please do so. We've sent it out a couple of times via Constant Contact. But we really would like everybody's feedback on that because it helps us as we move forward. I mentioned we talked about Marco Polo for educators, the educator platform. We've gotten some great reports. From Marco Polo for those that were kind of early adopters and jumping on board with using Marco Polo for educators, the platform. We've had a number that have downloaded. Educator guides and you can see some of the some of your colleagues and those of you, congratulations, that are on the phone who've jumped onto using this resource. They have printable resources. We have photo cards and you can see that these are all resources that come with that online Marco Polo for educators. So it was kind of exciting to see this data. There's a couple more things. We can move forward, Lori. Thank you. They also is a child facing app. So this is what the teacher would use in the classroom, and so you can see, we can actually see when the classroom teachers are using this resource. These are one to three minute videos that are age appropriate, that can enhance your curriculum. And it can also enhance its aligned with the class observation tool. So it can also enhance your regard for student perspectives. It helps with vocabulary. There are a lot of really great alignments. And it's a great support for teachers so that they're not at home at night or at naptime trying to look at YouTube for. Activities or information to extend some of the concepts or topics that you're discussing in your classroom. So the child facing app, you can kind of see how folks have been using it so far. And this was just a recent in the last. Couple of months, I believe, this report. We'll jump forward, please, Lori. This is for families. The other side of this app is that we've purchased both the educator and the family component. So the teacher can send home a one minute video with open ended questions for a family to discuss with their child. I like to use the example of being a marine biologist in a prior life. If you're talking about the ocean and you've got. One child that's really, really interested in sharks and keeps wanting to talk about sharks, you could send a shark a shark video home to the family and have some great open ended questions. That they could discuss with that child while they're talking about what they learned in school that day, and then the next day that child could. Help to share all of that information as you watch that video with the entire class. So there are great ways to to use this Marco Polo resource. We'll jump forward again. And this was just more on the learning games on the child facing app. There are some learning games that are incorporated into Marco Polo and how children use them. Again, in a developmentally appropriate way. So we will be as part of our ARPA before we move into New World's Reading Initiative, as part of our ARPA application, we will be incorporating and with. As long as the state. As long as the state approves it, we will try and incentivize Marco Polo training so that we give your teachers some boosts to participate. In some professional development related to Marco Polo. So we wanted you to know that that was coming and the great resources that were are out there. So just know that that's available and. So far, those that have used it have given us really phenomenal feedback, so we just want to keep adding that out there as a resource for your children and your families to engage in their child's learning. Another really great opportunity this year, the legislature approved VPK students to participate in the New World's Reading Initiative. This has been in place for kindergarten through fifth graders for for a while. The New World's Reading Initiative essentially is looking at children, they're eligible if they're not making age appropriate progress. And I'll tell you what that looks like in VPK. Or they're not yet reading on grade level. So for our K through fifth grade students, they're not yet reading on grade level. They have a measurement. But for our VPK students on the FAST, the Star Early Literacy Assessment. When you're done with progress monitoring period one, if you have children that appear to be low. They will be eligible to sign up their children, the parents can sign up their children for the New World's Reading Initiative. We will be sending you these flyers. Both electronically and so that you can print them off. As you go through your your FAST scores with your parents, which you're required to do, remember, once that progress monitoring is done, you're required to give those results to the parents. If that child is not. Hitting that target area, we want you to offer this to those families. The parents have to sign the children up. We can't do it for them. But once they go online. Their eligibility will be tied, the University of Florida is managing this with the FAST, early literacy. And they start getting one book a month. Once they're in the program, they will get one book a month until they are in fifth grade. It is a phenomenal program. It is mailed to their home. I don't think it's 12 books a year. I think it's nine or 10 books a year. I think they take some time off in the summer, but again. Nine books a year to go to a child's home from the time that they are four years old, all the way until they're in fifth grade. I think it's a phenomenal resource. And it's paid for through the state legislature, so I really want folks to take advantage of this. Please share this with your VPK teachers. And make sure that they know that this is a resource. If the parents don't know about it, they will not sign up. And we have a great opportunity when we're going through that FAST. Assessment with the parents telling them how their child's doing, that we have this really great free resource for them. A couple of quick reminders on the school readiness program. We will have, we, for those of you that have been doing this for a while, it's monitoring time again. We will start to come out and monitor all of the contractual requirements. But it's it's been a while. Under COVID, we did things a little bit differently. We had to do them remotely. We actually are required to come on site. So to learn about the school readiness monitoring, our team will be offering a compliance office hour on Tuesday, September 12th. There is a constant contact with the link. It's via Zoom, so you can join. Or have any of your team members, assistant directors or so on, join into this from 12:30 to 1:30. And the goal will be just to learn about the the school readiness monitoring requirements to avoid those top five monitoring violations that we see. It's it's across the board, and then if you do have a monitoring violation, how to create a successful corrective action plan. And then there will be time for you to ask questions and get some answers from our team members as well. So they're there to kind of set everybody up for success, so we wanted you to have that on your radar. Getting started with our new school year. Another couple of reminders, just to let everyone know, please make sure that if your your school readiness families. Are changing from a full day schedule to just school breaks and holidays, this usually happens with our older children. When they have after school programs or things that they do, they stop using school readiness every day. And they shift to school breaks and holidays. We need the parents to call us and let us know that. And vice versa, when they need to go full day for. Christmas holidays, let's say, you know, when the district is closed for two weeks and a parent is working and they need to go, if they're eligible, go back to a full day and. Care environment, the parents have to call us and let us know, and if you have questions, you can always feel free to call us, but just remind families that they need to do that. The other piece to remind everyone is to check the last day authorized on those school readiness certificates of eligibility. Usually about 30 days before they are going to be terminated, they get a notice from us via email. And we do a robo call as well to the family to say it's time to reauthorize your school readiness. And they have about 30 days to get us proof of purpose for care. So if they're, the adults have to be in school or working 20 hours or more a week. If the family misses that deadline to give us everything, we will no longer pay for services, so the services end on that last day authorized unless the family follows through. That is different because during COVID, we were not terminating anyone from care. So a reminder, if families came on during COVID, they might not realize that that last day authorized means that's it until we get. Eligibility verification for the next 12 months. Just making sure everyone's aware and that we're getting back into our our systems and reminding families that maybe hadn't been in prior to COVID. Another quick reminder, we've been asking for lots of documentation, both from families, we're required to get paycheck stubs and birth certificates and all of those kinds of things. We've also been asking for that from your staff to prove that your staff worked a certain number of hours or something for a stipend or a bonus. Please do not email those items to us. First of all, we are a public entity. Under the sunshine law, so at any point in time, someone could request all of our emails. And we want to make sure that we're protecting people's private, personal confidential information. The other thing is that hacking and those kinds of things occur and we never want to put a child or a parent's personal information at risk. So we have our EFS module, our parent portal and our our provider portal. That things can be uploaded through and we also have a share file portal. So if you need assistance with that, feel free to reach out to one of our specialists or you can reach out to me directly and we'll try and make sure. That we get you set up in those systems so that you can give us confidential information that can stay protected. And the last piece about school readiness is that there is a new, hopefully clearer and easier to understand, school readiness certificate of eligibility coming soon. We believe as of today, it's coming September 26th. Our school ready and a certificate will look different. On the certificate right now, it lists what we pay. It lists what the parents fee is and it lists the gold seal amount that the provider earns. Since that gold seal amount doesn't have to be passed on to the parent. It gets a little confusing because we pay more than the parents aware of and it gets confusing. So the state is revising that so that it's cleaner for both. The provider side and the parent side as far as what the parents required to pay and what the providers getting paid for. So that you can calculate your overages or anything else and the gold seal won't be listed there anymore, so it won't be quite as confusing. So just be, stay tuned, we will send it out via email as soon as it happens. And those new certificates will change as the parent comes in to recertify, so it won't change immediately. I see some yays out there. That's good. We're all really happy that that's being fixed in the EFS mod system. So our VPK program, we're off to a to a good start with our first hurricane day. Thank you for all of you who have. Gotten on board with putting your hurricane day into the EFS mod, your emergency closure day. I wanted to go through some. Overall reminders. Again, confidentiality, don't send information. You can see every department, we're trying to remind folks about that. Birth dates, social security numbers, please don't email that information to us. As far as your VPK application, please update those within two weeks of a change or 14 days to your per your VPK contract. So. Child enrollment, if you've enrolled a child, please make sure immediately, as quickly as you can, but no later than than within two weeks, that you've enrolled children. If you have a change in staff in your VPK class, we need to review that staff's credentials and make sure they're authorized so that you don't have to. To charge substitute hours for a staff member that you've placed in your VPK classroom as a lead that's not qualified. So make sure that you're sending those and then if you change your calendar. For, there could be a number of reasons, emergencies, sometimes we have a flood, sometimes we have electrical problems, just. Things can occur. If you need to change your calendar, make sure that you do that very quickly so that our staff can approve it and you don't lose any time or revenue. When updating your director and instructor changes, don't remove previous staff information and supporting documents. We still have to be audited, even if that staff member was there for one day, we have to keep that staff member's credentials on file because. We need to be able to prove that a credentialed individual was there, so never remove anything. From a previous staff member that's been in there, just add new ones. And again, our staff members are happy to help you with what that looks like in the system. I'm not the expert on that, but I know if you need some assistance, we'd be happy to support you in doing that. In adding new people and then when uploading documents in our coalition share file. Please don't create your own folders. If you create a folder, we don't know it's there and don't know where to look for it. We have some reminders set up so that we'll know when something's uploaded sometimes, but when you create your own folders, then it's very, very difficult for us to find things. Right. So training through Renaissance U is available for teachers and administrators that. Required course of the FAST Start Early Literacy Training Requirements Course. Anyone that's administering the STAR must take this class yearly, that changed annually. You must take this course. And we have to be able to prove it when we get audited and monitored by the state, so please make sure everyone is accessing Renaissance U. So that you have qualified folks administering this, the STAR. Individuals must be employed by private or public VPK program and completed the training, only training trained teachers can administer the FAST. And Renaissance U enrollment can be found on the VPK FAST webpage. The Division of Early Learning did change their website. They, it's different if those of you have not been there yet. It is now under DOE, so there's a little more looking around for us as well as you to find things, but it is pretty clear the VPK resources on the Department of Education. But it is pretty clear, the VPK resources on the Department of Education Division of Early Learning website. School-level administrators are the only ones who are able to access reports. So student password reports, the STAR Parent Report and Instructional and Planning Reports. So understand that your classroom teacher to use that report to guide instruction, they will need the school-level administrator to help them access that report so that this data can be used to help your children improve and the teacher has data to help in planning their day. The VPK Program Guide to the FAST Start Early Literacy can be found under the Implementation Section on the DEL website on that FAST webpage. I highly recommend again that you take a look sooner rather than later on that website so that you know how to access those resources. And we do have VPK office hours from 1:00 to 2:00 PM on Wednesdays and Thursdays. So if you have VPK questions or if you're struggling with any of these things, please jump onto the, our virtual office hours. You don't have to leave your center. And if your teacher needs to get on, please join us on Wednesdays and Thursdays to ask some of those questions. Our goal is to set you up for success. Testing requirement reminders, you are required to have a touchscreen device for administering assessments. You should ensure that sound is working on all the devices prior to administering the FAST. And if you're doing it in small groups of two to five students, you want to make sure that you're using headphones so that students aren't getting distracted by the sound on each other's devices. Providers are required to attempt to administer the assessment to all VPK children. I've heard some comments in the community that some teachers have said things like that student won't be able to take the assessment. You are required to try, to give it a, an effort. Don't mark a child as not tested, they're marked as non-participation after three failed attempts. So you do have to require it three times and they go over that in the training. The administrative, administration schedule, resources, reports and so on can be found at that DEL website. So here it is, the Florida's Assessment of Student Thinking Using STAR Early Literacy website. That's a link, so when we send this out, you'll be able to get to that as well. The DEL Provider Portal Classroom Roster needs to be up to date at all times. Remember that classroom roster we use regularly. So we need to make sure if you had a child that has left or come back in, if you've had a child that's a delayed enrollment or has transferred into your center, we need to make sure that that roster is up to date. Once their enrollment is approved, they'll then appear in Renaissance within 48 hours. So this is where the timing is, is really important because it takes 48 hours for that child to show up. And as we're getting closer to your assessment window, we want to make sure that all of your children are enrolled and are showing up in the Renaissance site. When you receive a new student, assess the student to get beginning data. If a student comes in after your, your window of PM, Progress Monitoring Period One, and that child shows up a couple of days later, go ahead because we want you to capture learning gains for that child. So we want you to try and assess that, that child, even if they're a delayed enrollment so that you get credit for the learning gains that that child has. Once a child is terminated, you'll no longer have access to the child's information in Renaissance. So just be aware of that. If a child is terminated in your system, you can't access that child's data any longer. Programs must provide parents that parent report within seven days of completing their assessment. And I hope that you'll be adding in the New World's Reading Initiative for any children that are below on the literacy areas of the FAST. Informing parents of their progress obviously is a key component of both rule and statute. You must check the box, show signature line for the signature line to be shown. Now, we said the administrators are the ones who can get to these reports. To show a signature line, you have to click the link. Two copies of the parent report need to be downloaded and two copies printed. Parent signatures and date signed are required with one copy, which is saved to the child's records at your site and the second one you give to the parent to take with them. And then during a VPK monitor, the parent reports will be reviewed for compliance. So right now we are looking at that. It is my understanding that in the future, there will be an electronic way to do this. But for right now, we're doing it with wet signatures and printing things out. I know it's burdensome from all of you, for all of you, but this is how we can prove that you have shared this within seven days with the parent and that they've actually seen it is by printing it and having them sign a copy. On the FAST website and the resources, there's a link, a report link to how to run the reports with step-by-step instructions. Again, we have office hours, so if you need some assistance with that, using our office hours is a great opportunity. But that, the various reports can show data at the student and class level. If you have multiple VPK classes, it's great to see how children are doing across the board, share best practices. And then that individualized and group instruction in the classroom, those reports will be really invaluable for your VPK lead teachers so that they can, can really plan their instruction. Lesson plans should reflect individualized, whoops, went too fast, individualizing group instructions. Just to be in alignment with the, the standards and to get you credit for learning gains. That's the big piece here. We want to make sure that all the good work that you're doing to meet child, a child's individual needs is also getting tracked to document learning gains on the FAST because that's how our readiness rates will be calculated in the future. Learning gains will be captured. Some upcoming training opportunities, we have early math for early learners, making sense of sets and numbers. That's at the Florida Early Childhood Professional Development Registry. And again, we'll send these out to you as well. But reference number 10746 is how you will, will access that class. It's on September 21st from 5:30 to 8:30. And then we have Centers Circle Time and Class, Number Sense and Operations. We've done a lot through literacy over the years. We want to make sure that we're working on our pre-math skills as well. Tuesday, October 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 here at the ELC of Seminole. We recommend that the, the staff attend the 921 class, the Early Math for Early Learners class to attend our Center Circle Time and Class training as well. We will be offering pre-K gla- class group coaching, which formerly was called Making the Most of Classroom Interactions. That's getting ready for the class program assessment. That'll be offered this fall, starting the end of this month. We highly recommend that your teachers participate in this class. It's a 24-hour course. But it really does, over the years when we've used the class program assessment in school readiness and had more time than our VPK-only folks have had to get themselves oriented to this assessment, we've seen a lot of success with teachers participating through the MMCI. So all training information and how to register will send out through constant contact in the next few days as we get our schedules together. But I really do highly recommend that program. The last thing that I wanted to talk to you about today is community resource presentations. We know that both our staff in this industry are struggling right now. We know that the families that we serve financially with inflation and housing costs and those kinds of things, everyone's getting, their budgets are getting tighter and tighter. And all of that stress can impact parents and children's mental health, our staff's mental health. And so one of the things that I would like to do here over the next few months is share resources with you all regarding, these are some agencies and programs that I wanted to share with you. One of them is called All Pro Dads. It's through the Healthy Start Coalition of Seminole. And it's specifically reaching to, reaching out to dads. We, over the years, moms have gotten a lot of support in, not enough, let's be honest, but a lot of support in raising young children. But we, the All Pro Dads program helps fathers and it is fathers, training fathers on how to engage with their young children and help their children learning and behavior and all of those kinds of things and, and valuing fathers. It's a great resource. We've got the Jobs Partnership, which is a faith-based collaborative of helping unemployed or underemployed individuals to access, sometimes it's competence building, sometimes it's resource and network building, but to access the supports to help themselves in the world of work, which we know trickles down to the support of their families. And so we have some more information that we'll be sharing with Jobs Partnership with you. Habitat for Humanity, I had a great opportunity today to meet with a representative for Habitat for Humanity and we'll be talking more about some really wonderful financial literacy courses for folks that are renting and have a dream or a goal of owning their own home. It sometimes seems like it's out of, out of the upper, well, out of, of their budget or their resources for a lot of folks. And Habitat has some really great programs right now. They are on track. They built 16 homes last year in Seminole County and they're on track to do 22 to 25 homes. They're three-bedroom, two-bath homes with a garage. Pretty neat. And I think about our early childhood educators and I think about some of our team members that might benefit from a Habitat home. And so I'd like to share some more information over time with you all about that. And finally, one of our neighbors, the Sharing Center is right here in, in Longwood, near us. Again, a faith-based organization that helps homeless families, has a food pantry. They actually have some work readiness training programs. And again, you encounter families that have barriers all the time. And so I'd like to share some of these resources with you. If you wouldn't mind, I have a couple of ideas, but I would like your feedback in the chat. I'm considering either recording some videos with these partners that we could put on our YouTube page so you could show to your staff. We consider doing an information sess- session. There's a lot of information from each of these organizations. But what do you think is the best way for us to get this information to you so that someone that's at the front desk or your infant teacher who knows mom is struggling because her hours got cut at work? Or they're interested in owning their own home and don't know how to start? Or maybe you have a dad that wants to be more involved in their child's life and they don't know where to start. What is the way that you recommend? Could we make videos? Would you like flyers? What's the best way for us to get this information to you and other resources as they become available in our community? Any ideas? Flyers, thank you. You got videos, okay? Flyers with QO, QR code, great idea. Flyers, okay. Facebook or Instagram, I like that, thank you. Okay, I appreciate that feedback and we will work on that. I wanted you to know about those four programs and certainly I will get that information to you and we'll keep working towards this. But you see families and have a relationship with families every day that I am not going to, to have. And I really want these great resources out for our parents of young children. The folks who are struggling or our colleagues, our friends and neighbors and our colleagues that might be financially struggling or need some additional resources or supports. It's a little trite to say, but it takes a village. If we don't all know and share the information that we have, then someone falls through the cracks. And I think we're all in this industry to make sure people and young children especially don't fall through the cracks. So I appreciate your giving me some feedback with that. I saw a quick question in here that someone missed how to apply for the discretionary grants. Right now, we are applying to the state first. And then once we have our menu, so to speak, of opportunities, the different things in the different categories, we will be sending that out to you. But my first step is for us to apply to the state by the end of the week and then they'll probably have a couple of weeks to tell us if they agree with our plan or we have to change it and then we will start sending it out to you. The $6 million will need to be spent by the end of June next year. So we'll probably finish things by mid-May so that we don't run into end of school year if we can. And we can get all of that documentation done. Okay, with that being said, any charity to help with automobiles? I don't off the top of my head, but I will certainly look into that, Margaret, and see what's out there. I know that the Sharing Center helps with other financial needs. So if you can offset your food, for example, and save your money to pay for, you know, if you're playing with your budget, can save for automobiles, but I will look into that and, and definitely check to see. Helen asked if you could get the PowerPoint. Yes, absolutely. We'll send that out to you. Any other questions? I know it's a lot of information and I talk fast, so I apologize. The grants that you get, so the grants that, Sarah, I see that you asked the grants. The ARPA discretionary grants are not tax-free. Those are program income. But I definitely would recommend that you talk to your tax attorney for that because these grants are offsetting business expenses, so they are considered program income. But definitely consult with your, your tax folks. Any other questions? Just let me say thank you so much for your partnership, for everything that you do for children and families in our community and for your staff. I know you're working very, very hard to support your team members and doing the great work that they do. But we appreciate your partnership. Hope you're off to a great school year and we are here to help in any ways that we can. Thank you. Cheyenne has put the provider survey link, the provider needs survey link into the chat box. And we'll resend the link via email as well today. Thank you, everyone. Have a fantastic school year. We appreciate you all as well. Thank you so much.